This conference will now be recorded.
We're going ahead and calling the meeting to order for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 Planning Commission. Would staff please take the roll?
Christopher Farrar.
On mute.
John Orr.
Present.
Lum Kwong. I can see that you're here. Carrie Johnson. I don't see Carrie. Nadia Gardner.
Present.
And Robert Strickland. I see Robert. Clancy Adams, I'm here. Gail Henrickson.
Present.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to go ahead and welcome the public today. The Planning Commission is currently the official venue for public involvement in planning and community development for Klatzup County. We thank you for your interest and involvement and welcome your thoughts, both by email and verbal public comments later in this meeting. Move on to the agenda. I'll take a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as presented or any amendments.
I move we adopt the agenda for the October 12th meeting as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Do we have a second? Commissioner Orr, you're off mute. You want to be the second?
Yes, second. That's what I was ineptly attempting to do, yes.
Right, thank you so much. It is the move and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not a public hearing on the agenda. So we have a comprehensive plan update, public hearing later in this meeting, and there will be public comment taken at that time also. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, please identify who you represent. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak today? Sounds like no one is interested in talking, at least at this point in the meeting. Thank you. So we can go ahead and move on to foundation building topics. So I invite county staff to go ahead and present.
Thank you, Chair. Today, we're going to be touching on a couple of different areas, and they are actually very appropriate. We're going to be talking about legislative hearings, quasi judicial hearings, and then touching a little bit on the appeal process and how that plays out as decisions are made at the county level. So for those who attended the September 29th Planning Commissioner training that the Department of Land Conservation and Development put on, I'm going to basically be showing most of their slides. So I will apologize in advance for those who are there. You're going to see a repeat of a lot of that material. But it was a very well done presentation, and I know Commissioner Farrar was there. I believe Commissioner Strickland, and I think John Orr may have been there as well. But we'll be moving through this, and some of it will actually apply to the work that you'll be doing later on in the agenda. So last month, County Council had given this overview about how things are layered in terms of land use planning in the state and how we fit into that process. And so as we go through, not only the comprehensive plan update, but anytime that you have a case that comes before you, a lot of these pieces will play into a decision that you make. And everything that we do at the county level needs to be consistent with all the other rules and regulations that are out there, either at the state level or within our own codes here in the county. So when we look at types of decisions, there's really three types. There's the legislative, which we'll have in our hearing later this morning. There is quasi judicial, and then there are ministerial actions. And so when we talk about a legislative land use decision, this is something that's of broad scope. It's not tied to one or two or three particular pieces of property, but it's something that's larger that will affect large segments of landowners and population within the county. The best example, obviously, is our comprehensive plan update, but also as we change zoning codes or zoning regulations and standards, that has a much broader impact. And those are considered legislative land use decisions. As the Planning Commission, you are not the decision makers. You review the work, you obtain public input, and then your job is to make a recommendation to the governing body, which in our county is the Board of County Commissioners. Having said that, there's also a lot more flexibility in how we process this, how we gather information as we look to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And so you don't have to worry necessarily about ex parte contacts, which we'll talk about in a moment. We don't have to worry about keeping a record open. We have more latitude in how we make our decisions and base them. We're not concerned necessarily with bias, but we still have to look out for conflict of interest. So for example, if there was a zoning change that was coming before the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and the zoning change, say, was to add grocery stores to a certain zoning district in the county, and you happen to be the owner of a grocery store chain, that owned property in that designation, that would be a conflict of interest. So we still need to be aware of that as we go forward, but you don't have to worry so much about your ex parte communications. So I'm going to stop there for legislative land use decisions. Are there any questions about this type of decision or this process? Okay. I can't change. I had a request in the chat to change to a presentation view, but I can't because this is a PDF, and I don't have the original PowerPoint slides from the state. So if it's too small, I can try to blow it up a little bit more, but that's about as big as I can go. Okay, so the next type of decision, and this is what the Planning Commission will deal with more often than not, are what are considered quasi judicial land use decisions. And these affect usually one property or just a very small group of properties. They're usually project specific. And in these particular types of cases, the Planning Commission is the decision maker. And so there are a lot more rules and a lot more structure to how we process this, how we hold our hearings, how we collect information and testimony when we're looking at a quasi judicial case. Some examples of this would include conditional use permits, which you, as a Planning Commission, review and approve for certain types of conditional uses. Also, if you were to have a subdivision application come in, that would also be considered a quasi judicial case and a decision because you are the final decision makers on that. And then ministerial, these are things like building permits and development permits that come in. In our system, we call them a type one permit. And under ORS, these are not considered land use decisions. So that means that there's no appeal opportunity, there's no requirement for a public hearing, and there's no requirement for a public notice. So we won't really spend any more time talking about ministerial actions, mainly because they're just not considered land use decisions. So going back to legislative hearings, during this type of procedure, everybody has the opportunity to participate, and that includes the written comments that, like we received this morning. It also includes public comment during the hearing period. And as I stated before, we don't have to worry about ex parte contact or bias, but that conflict of interest is still very important, and we always have to be cognizant of it. Looking at quasi judicial decisions, this is where we get into that more structured process. Oftentimes, there will be a pre-application meeting that occurs between the applicant and staff before any materials are submitted. And that's really just to help walk the applicant through the process, for staff to understand the scope of the project, and for everybody to know with some certainty if what's being proposed is even possible under the current regulations that we have. Because we don't want someone to submit an application, pay the application fee, only for us to tell them, well, no, we're sorry, our code will never let you do that. So that's really the purpose of a pre-application meeting. It's encouraged, but it's not required as part of the process. So when the application then comes in after that pre-application meeting, staff has 30 days to review the application to make sure that it's complete. And completeness includes not only did you submit all the things that you need to check off on your application list, but there's also a component that looks at the quality of those materials. If you submit a response for a conditional use, and your only response is, we meet the criteria, and there's no documentation or statement of fact or anything that comes along with that, we can't really deem the application complete because the applicant hasn't given us enough information to make a determination. So if we do deem it complete, we send out a letter with a request for additional information. And under state statute, there's an additional 150 days that they have to submit that information or their application would expire. So I'm going to stop there. Are there any questions so far about either ministerial actions, the legislative process, or applications and pre-application meetings for quasi judicial? Okay, seeing none. So when we talk about quasi judicial hearings, they do have to have a required public notice. And we are required, under state statute, the applicant obviously gets a notice of the hearing. We have to notify nearby property owners. And depending upon how a property is zoned and designated in the comprehensive plan, that notification distance can vary anywhere from 100 feet within an urban growth boundary to up to 750 feet if it's farm or forest resource land. We're also required, under state statute, to send to any recognized neighborhood association. And I did talk with Department of Land Conservation and Development to get some clarification on this. And the response I received back from Gordon Howard, who is with that department, was that the governing body, in this case, our Board of Commissioners, needs to officially recognize a neighborhood association in order for them to be considered recognized. And then if there were any other requirements in our code, and so we had to send to anybody else, then we're also required to send that notice out to those organizations or persons. Any questions about notifications?
I have one quick question. With regard to neighborhood associations, is there an existing list of recognized associations in Klatzup County? And is there some criteria listed someplace that gives the necessary attributes of an association to be considered officially? And I know that's a lot. There's no need to answer all that now, but I'm wondering if you could just send something out, you know, in the next week or two that might answer my question on that, unless you have something brief to say. Thank you.
Yeah, briefly, Section 1.0500 of our code does have a definition of neighborhood organization. And that spells out the criteria that we would use to look at a neighborhood association. I have not seen an official list anywhere that says, here are the ones that the board has officially acknowledged. I think that there has been, I think, an agreement. I don't know if there's been an official acknowledgement that we do send to neighborhood associations, say, like in Surf Pines. Also, the Arch Cape Community Club is copied on notices for projects in that area. But I don't know at this point in my research. I've not seen any type of resolution or order that officially recognizes them as a neighborhood association. I think it's been more done as a courtesy at this point. But I would have to do more research to actually verify that.
Thank you.
Okay, so continuing on our notifications, there's a lot spelled out in state statute about what we have to put in a notice. And it's very important that we follow this because that can be a reason for appeal and remand back to the county to rehear the case and redo the notification correctly. So we're looking at things to make sure that someone who gets a public notice can basically understand what the request is. We want to be able to tell them where the project is located, what's being requested. If there's a public hearing, where, when, and how that will be held. Requirements for how far in advance we have to send those things out. We have to list, from our code and our comprehensive plan, all the criteria sections that we're going to use to evaluate that application when it comes in. We have to make sure that people know that they can come into our office and inspect the application materials, that they can get copies of the materials at a reasonable cost. And probably most important is this raise it or waive it rule, which basically says, if you're at a public hearing and you do not raise an issue as part of the evaluation of that application, you lose your right to waive it on appeal or to bring it forward on appeal. So that's really important, and we do make sure that that's included in all our notices. And when we do public hearings, say, on a conditional use permit, it's also important that the chair raises that same point so that people are aware, as they present their testimony, that this is their one shot to raise all the issues of concern. So. Any comments or questions about what we put in our notices? Okay, so more on quasi judicial decisions. And for those who have been on the Planning Commission for a while, you'll know that when Bruce Francis was chair, he always would read a script when we would have one of these cases come forward. And it's always good to have a script. They're widely used, not only at planning commissions, but at Board of Commissioner meetings and other types of meetings where you do have a very structured process that you need to make sure you follow all the steps. So, you know, in a few months, we may have a conditional use permit coming to the board for a template test, I believe. And when we get to that hearing, I may have misspoken on that. But if we ever get to a point where we have a conditional use coming forward, the Chair Gardner, whoever's chair during that meeting, would have a lot of process rules that they're going to read. You know, basically outlining how we're going to conduct the hearing, who goes first, who presents when, that raise it or waive it statement. We want to, again, have the chair announce what criteria we'll be using from our code as we review the application. And we want to make sure that, at that point, anybody who's had any ex parte contact, anybody who may have an appearance of bias or some personal bias in a case, or an actual, either potential or actual conflict of interest, that those all get declared upfront. And then typically, the way that we process the hearing is after the chair has done that opening statement, staff will present their findings and our recommendation on it. And then it's opened up for testimony. And typically, the applicant is allowed to go first, following staff. They usually have an unlimited amount of time to discuss their application and how they meet the criteria. And then it's open to the public, those in favor, those who may be opposed, and people who just want to speak, perhaps in a more neutral manner about an application. And once that's completed, then the applicant has the ability to address any of the items that were raised during the public testimony. With a quasi judicial hearing, there's also the opportunity for anyone to request that the record remain open. And if that happens, it's automatically granted, and it's a continuation of a minimum of seven days. And you'll notice, if you have a chance to skim through your letter this morning from the Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition, that on our legislative hearing coming up, they have requested that the record remain open for seven days. And so we have verified with County Council that that is not mandatory for a legislative hearing, that under ORS 197.763, it's for quasi judicial hearings. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. So we've had our hearing, we've had our testimony, the applicants had their rebuttal period, and nobody, let's say, has requested the record remain open. At that point, the chair would close the hearing, and the board begins their, or in your case, the Planning Commission begins your discussion. And so at that time, once you've had your discussion, there should be a motion and a second. And then there's further deliberation. And at that point, amendments to the motion can be made. And then when that is completed, that's when you have your final vote. And after that, usually, the staff report would constitute your written hearings unless there are new findings that the Planning Commission used to base its decision on. And then if that's the case, those would have to be reduced to writing as well and included in our notice of decision. So I will pause there. Any questions about the hearing itself for quasi judicial cases?
This isn't about quasi judicial, but it's about requests for continuance or leaving the record open for additional time. Is it not allowed to do so for a legislative hearing? Or is it just optional?
I will defer to County Council on that question.
Sure. So anytime you want to open, continue a hearing, that really is a discretionary decision for legislative action. You know, for a quasi judicial, we're really talking about somebody's property rights. And so that's why they've built in certain due process concerns. So it is not, does not have to automatically be granted. But you, as the Planning Commission for Legislative Issues, may grant, for any reason that you see fit, a reason to hold open a public hearing, or you can have a second public hearing. It is definitely more of a fluid type of a process when you're talking about legislative. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about the 150 day rule. When an application comes in, staff just doesn't have, you know, an unlimited amount of time to look at it and work through it and issue a notice of decision. We are actually limited in how much time we have to process an application. And so for cities, it's 120 days. For areas outside of urban growth boundaries, it's 150 days. And what that means is, we have the initial 30 day period once we receive an application to review it and either deem it complete or incomplete. Once it's deemed complete, we have 150 days after that to issue the staff notice of decision or hold a public hearing on it and issue that notice of decision. And then all the appeals that come after that, up through the Board of Commissioners, have to be completed within 150 days. So we do operate on very narrow timelines. Now, the applicant themselves can ask for an extension to that 150 day limitation, and they can extend it up to additional 215 days so that, basically, you would have a whole year to complete an application. If, for some reason, the county fails to meet this timeframe, the applicant can then go into Circuit Court and ask for a writ of mandamus that would force the county, basically, to issue the permit that has been requested. So it's very important that we be aware of those timeframes as we move forward with cases. And especially if you're in a situation where something is subject to a continuance, and so you've left the record open for seven days, and then there's a rebuttal period, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. We have to be always aware of making sure we're within our state mandated timeframes. So we talked a little bit, a couple slides ago, about findings, and basically how the staff report is usually what we adopt as our findings when we issue a notice of decision. And then, you know, if other information is relied upon by the Planning Commission or even a board in a decision that they make, additional findings should be written so that we have a record of how we came to that decision. And when we write findings, and we work on this a lot as staff, and there are whole courses on it, what we want to make sure is that we're basing our decisions on facts and that we're looking at the criteria and the standards that are in the code. Because what we are doing is, every case that goes through this process is subject to appeal, you know, all the way up to potentially the Supreme Court of the United States. So we are laying the foundational record for how our decisions are made, why we made them, and the facts that we relied upon to make them. So it's very important that we always rely on the standards that are in the code and rely on them for our decisions. That basically sums up what I just said. We do want to make sure that when we write our findings, that they are clear and that they do address the criteria. A finding that says, the project is consistent with goal X of the comprehensive plan with no other information is not a good finding. You want to explain how it's consistent. What is it about the project that is consistent or will be consistent if they do a condition of approval that says they have to do X, Y, or Z? So it's, again, always making that link between compliance with the code and what's actually happening with the project. So. I think we've covered this. Failure to make that cause and effect relationship clear, that's usually when you have a pretty poorly written finding. So any questions about findings?
I just have a comment real quick. I find the findings that the staff draft are exceptionally well done. And it takes a special group of folks to really draft good findings. So I think the planning staff really deserve a pat on the back for their findings. Just my two cents.
All right, thank you. And I would agree. Julia and Ian and Jason do a wonderful job writing all their findings. Okay, so moving on, burden of proof. A lot of responsibility for the burden of proof is placed on the applicant. As staff or as a Planning Commission, our job is not to make the applicant's case for them. It's their job to show how what they want to do complies with our codes or can't comply with our codes if they meet certain conditions of approval. It's also the applicant's job, if anything comes up during public testimony, to be able to address what was said and to provide information that would support what the applicant is saying. So it's always important to remember that we are not here to be advocates for applicants. We are here to make sure that they get due process and that all decisions are based on facts and codes. So we talked a little bit about continuance, and of course, that's requested in our letter that came in this morning. In a quasi judicial hearing, anybody can request that the record be kept open. And if that occurs, then it's an automatic seven day continuance of the record. During the seven days or whatever the Planning Commission or the board were to decide upon at their meeting, that's, I don't know what I was going to say there. But during that time, anybody can submit any new information relevant to the case. Usually, what happens after that is when that time is up. Let's say the record's been kept open for seven days following the public hearing. People submit additional information, and that will be in writing. That's not going to be verbal comments. That will be written comments that are submitted to planning staff. Those comments, at the close of seven days, would then be disseminated out to the applicant and to everybody who submitted comments. and to everybody who submitted comments. At that point, there is a seven day rebuttal period for anybody to address any of the new information that came in during the previous seven days. And then following that, the applicant gets the final rebuttal, and they have seven days to address any issues that were raised either during that first initial submittal period or the rebuttal period that everybody could participate in. So you're basically extending your, your, your record out for another three weeks at a minimum in these types of cases. We've run into it several times with our hearings officer cases. I've not run into it yet here at the planning commission level, but it's not to say that it couldn't happen. Any questions about keeping the record open? Okay, again, the raise it or waive it issue is always there. If it's not raised at the initial hearing, then you're not going to be able to raise it when it goes up to appeal. And those appeals go up to Luba from our board, and then from there, they go on to Supreme Court or Court of Appeals, not in that order, Court of Appeals and Supreme Court. And Joanna will talk a little bit after my presentation about, about that process as well. So again, as a planning commission, as you hear a quasi judicial case, it's your role to be what's called the impartial tribunal. You are acting as a judge in a hearing that has to base their decisions on standards and code citations, and you have to be free of personal bias. You cannot have actual or potential conflicts of interest. And it's very important that everybody has the same information as we move forward making a decision. So part of that is ex parte contacts or ex parte communications. And that's basically when you, as a planning commissioner, have received or obtained information that your other planning commissioners and the applicant and the public do not have as we open a hearing on a case. This can be something that happens verbally. It can be something that happens in writing. You can, it can be a newspaper article. It can be social media. It can be your neighbor coming up to you in the grocery store and saying that, you know, I know that on so and so's property in 1970, they, you know, buried a mass grave of people, or they found an archaeological site right where they're proposing to put this building, but nobody knows about it. Anything that you learn that is not part of the record that goes to a public hearing, that you've gathered that information outside, whether a site visit, discussion with other people, discussion with the applicant, you need to disclose that at the beginning of the hearing. And when you disclose it, you need to not only say, I had an ex parte contact, you need to explain what that contact was. Was it a newspaper article that you read? Did you see something on Facebook? Was it something on the radio? And then you need to clarify the context, the substance of what was discussed or what you learned. So if I run in, if I'm a planning commissioner, I run into my neighbor at the grocery store who tells me there's a potential archaeological site on the property, that's what I need to disclose. I can't just say, yeah, I had a conversation with Joe Schmo. That's not going to be enough to disclose your ex parte contact with someone. Site visits are also considered...
Yeah, can I interrupt for two seconds? So I think that was all excellent. I think the bottom line is it's not illegal to have ex parte contacts. It's illegal not to disclose them. So just if you can keep that in mind when you, when you're thinking about, well, should I disclose this information? Always err on the side of disclosing the substance of a communication or information. It just, it absolutely makes sure that the county, when it goes forward with its decision, that those, those types of decisions won't, won't be appealed for some, something like that. So anyway, turn back over to you.
Just quickly related to that, if a commissioner, say, planning commissioner read a newspaper article that related to the issue that they were going to consider in a quasi judicial review, and they chose, could, could they submit that article, a, you know, an electronic copy of that article as written testimony to the record as anyone from the public might submit written comments prior to the beginning of the meeting? And that then it would become known to everyone involved in the, the hearing?
If I can take this one, you know. I, I think we have to make sure that when we're wearing our quasi judicial hat, we're wearing that quasi judicial hat. So if there are things that come up, you certainly can disclose them on the record. So say there is a newspaper article out there. Perhaps having a conversation with staff to make sure it is part of the record would be the best way to go rather than come to the board meeting or come to the planning commission meeting with that article. And that will allow everybody to have that documentation in advance. But having said that, if you come, and there's something that comes up and you find out about it the day before a planning commission meeting, and you're doing a quasi judicial decision on it the next day, if there's not enough time to get that information in front of folks, certainly you can, you can mention that in ex parte contacts, that there is this document out there. It is really on the side of, let's disclose as much as possible so that the applicant has the right to rebut that information. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joanna. And then just to reiterate some more, site visits are considered ex parte contacts as well, and you do need to disclose them generally. And this is my personal perspective from having worked in this profession for many decades now, that a site visit is usually good. It gives you a better idea of what's going on and the, on the property and the context that surrounds the property. As Joanna pointed out, though, it is important that you state that at the beginning of a meeting before the hearing so that everybody knows, A, that you did do a site visit, and B, what it was that you observed when you were out there. So if you've gone out to the property where the potential archaeological site is, and you talk to the owner who says, yeah, my grandfather dug this up in 1920, and then he buried it all back up again because we didn't want to tell anybody about it, you needed to share that with a group so that everybody has that same information moving forward. All right, and then conflict of interest. And I know this comes up all the time in discussions. You know, what constitutes a conflict of interest? What's a real conflict of interest? You know, what may, might be a conflict of, conflict of interest? So if you have a potential conflict of interest, that means that you or somebody in your household or somebody that you are in business with may, may have some sort of financial interest in a decision that you are reviewing and, and making a judgment on. So as an example, going back to our grocery store rezoning. If the grocery store rezoning comes to the, to the planning commission, and you are not the owner of the grocery store, but maybe your spouse, who lives in your house with you, is the owner of a company that makes boxes, that sells the boxes to the mayonnaise manufacturer who stocks the store where the grocery store will go. That's a potential conflict of interest. And Joanna can correct me if I'm giving a very poor example. But, so it's not 100% clear that you necessarily are going to financially benefit because your spouse has a cousin who makes boxes that's sold to a mayonnaise maker who stocks a grocery store. But if your spouse or you are actually the person who is, you know, making the mayonnaise or owns a grocery store, you have what would then be a conflict of interest. So when you have a potential conflict of interest, you want to make sure, again, upfront, transparent, that you declare what it is that may be the potential conflict of interest. And then at that point, you're still allowed to participate in the hearing. And you, you can take part in the hearing and be part of the discussion. And you can also be part of the vote. But you want to make sure that if a hearing is continued, that every time that hearing is reopened, that you are announcing that potential conflict of interest. So questions about potential conflict of interest? Okay, so then here, if you have the actual conflict of interest, this is where you are clearly going to benefit from a decision that you are voting on. Then you want to absolutely, a, declare it upfront. But then at that point, you really need to recuse yourself from participating in the discussion, and you definitely will not be taking part of the, taking part in the vote on that hearing. And really, the best thing to do at that point is to leave the dais. And if you can, actually leave the public hearing so that it, there's not an appearance of perhaps trying to, you know, sway or intimidate the, the remaining planning commissioners who may, you know, for whatever reason, want to, you know, help your case. You, you, you just want to avoid any appearance of any conflict. And that's good in anything that we do in life, not just being on the planning commission. But, so I will stop there.
Actually, Gail, if I can just say, especially with potential and actual conflicts of interest, if a planning commission member has a question about this, this is something that's so much easier to deal with ahead of time. So feel free to contact me, you can email me, you can call me. I can give you that information, my contact information, if you don't already have it. But it's important that we kind of talk through the issues. Sometimes it's not, most of the time, it's not 100% clear whether it's an actual or potential conflict of interest. Sometimes I will even have to call the Government Ethics Board to find that information out. So making a decision about whether it's an actual or potential conflict of interest, let me help you take that burden off of your shoulders if there is a question. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thanks, Joanna. And so having said all this about conflict of interest and things, there's always an exception to every rule. And in this case, there is an exception that if it's absolutely necessary for someone who has a conflict of interest to participate in the vote in order to constitute a quorum, then that can happen. But what cannot happen is that the person with the conflict of interest cannot take part in any of the discussion about the, the case until it gets to the actual vote. Whenever it's possible, my recommendation would be to either continue the hearing, if you don't have a quorum, and continue it to another meeting, if that's possible and the applicant agrees to it. That would be the ideal situation. But if push does come to shove, then there is always this exemption that exists under state statute, so. All right, and I promise I'm almost done. Two more slides left. Bias, and I know this is one that has caused perhaps some consternation as it's been raised in the proposed draft of the planning bylaws. And to reiterate, personal bias doesn't mean that you are not allowed to have an opinion on something. Because we all have opinions, we share our opinions, whether people want to hear them or not. We all share our opinions at some time or another. Bias, though, is different. It's more than just having an opinion. It's basically having an opinion to the point where you are not able to objectively look at a case and make a decision based on the standards that are in our codes and state statutes and any other applicable laws. And at that point, again, if you have or believe you may have some sort of personal bias, you want to be able to declare that at the beginning of a hearing. It doesn't mean that you have an actual conflict. You're, you're not having a financial gain from it. But it may cloud your judgment to the point where something could be appealed and sent back because of that potential bias. And so, for example, if, you know, I had my cousin who dated Joe Schmo over here, and he stood her up at the altar, and now, you know, for whatever reason, I will never, ever like Joe Schmo. I don't care what he does. He will never, ever be a good person in my book, and I'm just going to vote down anything he ever wants to do. That would be personal bias. And so you want to be very careful of that as well. Any questions about bias? Nope, okay. Well, that concludes my presentation. I'm going to pull up Joanna's slides here. She's got a couple of slides to go through, and I'll turn it over to her.
Well, thank you. I appreciate providing that information, that background. I think it's so important because we deal with people's property rights. And so when we talk about people's property rights, of course, folks, we have to, we have to really ensure that applicants have their due process rights protected. That's noticed hearing, and getting a fair hearing. So that's why we go through all of these training modules and, and processes so everybody can understand that we speak the same language. So I'm going to talk today about appellate review of land use decisions. This is not going to be mind blowing, take a lot of time. This is really just to give you an idea of what the process is when the county makes a decision, a final decision. If somebody doesn't agree with that decision, it's somebody who's a peer or it's the applicant, how does that go through a Court of Appeals, Luba process? So looking at the next slide, when we're talking about land use Board of Appeals, it's really something that happened in 1979. Before 1979, we had a very, would say, difficult, archaic process. So we had, first of all, local land use decisions, they had a process. And then when that process was final, so you will know this through your, what we've talked about before. There may be an administrative decision. It goes to a hearings officer. It gets appealed from a hearings officer to the Board of Commissioners. That decision by the Board of Commissioners is generally the final decision if it's been appealed through that process. But anytime a decision is final, there is an appeal process. But I'm just talking about it, once it goes to the Board of Commissioners, if the board takes the final decision, what's the next step for an appellate or a, an applicant or a interested party, what's the next step? Well, pre 1979, local land use decisions were appealed through the writ of review process to the circuit court. And that took a while for folks to get decisions, right? We have some pretty strict timelines, which Gail had talked about during her presentation. And the reason being is because there's a whole history of land use decisions taking forever to make it through the appeal process. So they go to the circuit court. You would have judges who know a lot, a lot about criminal law, maybe a little bit about civil law. But when you're talking about land use, oof, that was a whole different ball of wax for them. And so you would have very inconsistent and slow decisions. And if the, there was, there is an appeal, go to the Court of Appeals. And a Court of Appeals is an automatic appeal process. But again, slow, slow process. And then to the Supreme Court, which may or may not grant an appeal. So it took a long time, you didn't have a whole lot of specialized review. So the legislature then formed this land use Board of Appeals. And the Land Use Board of Appeals is really a panel of land use experts. It is a group of, I want to say, three folks who've practiced, attorneys who've practiced in land use before. It's an expedited review, it's relatively quickly. I think it only takes you a couple months to actually get a decision from Luba. They're, they apply that consistent knowledgeable application of law. They'll have seen many conditional use permits, appeals, as opposed to maybe the circuit court, who it may be their first or second time that they've seen something like that. So then it's just for all land use decisions. Really what we talk about when we talk about land use decisions is those that have made it through the land use appeal process on a local level. So it's not anything relating to land, so it's not deeds. If there was a conveyance and there was an issue about a conveyance, it's really for the local land use application of the zoning. it's really for the local land use application of the zoning and land use laws. So same thing as before, once it makes it to Luba, you have a right to appeal to the court of appeals. And then if the Supreme Court takes the case, you can appeal it to the Supreme Court. And I'm talking about the Oregon Supreme Court, not the US Supreme Court. Because there are no issues of federal law in these most of the time. So are there any questions about this appeal process? All right, well, then I'm gonna turn it back on over to Gail.
And I'm gonna turn it back to Chair Gardner.
Thank you, Counselor and Director Henrickson, for that very thorough presentation. That should be helpful for us as a body going forward. So I'm just gonna pause for a second there. Any final question or comments from the commissioners before we move on? All right, let's move on to the minutes. For the minutes of the September 4th, 2021, regular planning commission meeting, does anyone have any corrections? Hearing none, the meeting minutes are approved and presented as presented by consensus. And now we're on to our public hearing. This is a legislative hearing regarding the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan Update Goals 1 through 4. You can see that in your packets, linked to the number 4 conveniently, starting on page 39. Will staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you. So at our September 28th joint meeting with the countywide citizen advisory committee, the planning commission and the citizen advisory committee members did make several recommendations for revisions to what was draft 3 of Goals 1 through 4. Those recommendations from the planning commission were presented to the board at a work session on October 6th. And generally, the board's discussion centered around several different points. And it was very general discussion. But summarizing their discussion basically stated that they were in agreement that the plan, once it's revised and updated, should continue to be reviewed every five to seven years, just so we're not necessarily doing this whole process just once every 40 years. We need to, as staff, make sure that we are finding ways to continually reach out and to incorporate comments from all different levels of class, culture, and demographics. The commission stated, or the board stated, that they really wanted to make sure that the process was responsive, inclusive, attractive, and efficient. That we should make sure that we're not weaponizing the process in terms of political polarization. And also just really stress the need to obtain input from the public. Commissioner Banks also had some specific comments regarding Goals 3 and 4. And I can discuss those when we get to that point. But what I would recommend at the discretion of the planning commission is that we review each goal separately and have a motion and a recommendation and a vote on each of the goals separately. And I've included in the packet for the planning commission meeting today the revisions that were recommended at that September 28th meeting. Staff did not make any changes to those goals following that meeting. And I've provided the board input and discussion for your consideration with regard to whether or not you want to make any additional amendments to those goals. And that concludes my very brief report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
I think discussion is now open for planning commission members. Does anyone have any initial questions for Director Henrickson before we get started?
I do, this is Commissioner Farrar.
Yes.
Just with regard to minor edits to some of the background material that's presented for each goal, where there's an outright error, would it be best just to send that suggested change to you directly and not discuss it at the meeting? There's only a few places that I've found that there's things that really aren't correct and they need to be revised. But they're not related to a objective or policy.
If there are factual errors, I think those should be brought forward now. If it's typographical or grammatical things, that can be considered Scrivener's errors. Those can be sent separately to me. But yeah, if there's factual errors, I think it would be helpful for staff to receive that information now.
Well, I can mention one for the record here on page 51 of this packet. There are a number of statistics given with respect to different parts of our population. And they're shown as being percentages, but in fact, the numbers that are given are decimal numbers. And if you read it as the decimal number percent, it's off by a factor of 100 for Hispanic or Latino, for Asian, for American Indian, for Black, for Native Ohio, and two or more races. Those are all off by a factor of 100. The one for white is correct, it's shown as 81 plus percent. But those others are a mixing of decimal mathematics with a percent. So it's, it's just not correct that way.
It feels to me that that's almost a Scrivener's error. Do we need to make a motion for that, Director Henrickson? Or do you think that could just be corrected through staff?
I think that can just be corrected.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Before we get started, we're gonna, we're just gonna have a brief discussion now. Then we're gonna take public testimony. And then after that, we'll really get into the meat of the discussion and making motions on the, on the actual. And as Director Henrickson said, we'll go goal by goal, starting with number one. So this is just kind of a kickoff time here. Seeing no, no hands in the air and also not hearing. I wanted to note to the group that Commissioner Johnson arrived during the presentation and is on the phone. So we have the full commission here today. So thank you and welcome, Commissioner Johnson. I just wanted to start off with a comment. I, I had to look back at the process and to think about, you know, what has happened up to today. It's kind of a big deal that we've, we've made it to the day when we get to make our final recommendation to the county commission after several years of work. So I wanted to note that this comp plan process started out in February of 2019. And that was like a completely different world at that time, prior to the COVID-19 global pandemic. We had five open houses at that time, in person, live and local. And we also had a lot of, we had five topic-specific in-person workshops. And all of those were open to anybody, whether you were on the planning commission, the board of commissioners, the local CACs, or the countywide CAC, and then just the general public. And in fact, we had great turnout. I remember being packed into a county room, learning about forestry and got a lot from that workshop. And so I'm very thankful that we got to have that opportunity to get together as human beings in the same room before the world was turned upside down. But at that time, also, the staff did a great job. They developed a website and they developed this really cool story map, which I encourage you to go back and look at again, two years later. And as part of that, there was also a, there was a questionnaire. And again, people of all throughout the county were welcome to participate in that questionnaire. And then staff at that, around that time, set up a Facebook page for the county, probably around the first, the first Facebook page, and started sharing information about the process and about all of our meetings via Facebook. Of course, staff also uses email to let interested parties know about meetings. And anybody could sign up for that email list on the website. Public meeting notices, as always, are put online and they're in local newspapers. There have been newspaper articles throughout the whole process. And of course, there have been lots of public meetings since, I think it was March 2020. Those meetings have been online. In some ways, that's been a challenge. And in some ways, that's been an opportunity for those people who aren't able to drive up to Astoria and be there in person, or not be able to participate live. They can watch recordings really for the first time. Of course, there's the, the board of commission, work sessions that people can observe, the planning commission, the countywide CAC, and the six local CACs. And originally, there were 33 members of those CACs. And I know people have come and gone. But, but those are, that's a significant number of people that have been participating from the beginning. And I also acknowledge that all of our staff are also community members and have been very active in this process from the beginning also. So I've been, you know, looking back on it, I'm very happy with what we were able to do in the face of some very challenging times. You know, of course, we're all volunteer community members. And as an example, at our last countywide CAC joint PC meeting, there were 20 people there working together to put together this draft. So I think, you know, staff has done a really great job putting together this public process. And though, I mean, I think always we'd love more public participation. I think we've done the best that we can. And, and I want to thank them for all that work. And I want to thank everybody in this virtual room also for all the work that you've put into it so far. I also wanted to note one thing that I was curious about, because there's been a lot of discussion about the community advisory committees and the town halls, is that town halls have always been a part of this process. They've always been part of planning, of course, for a variety of different topics and in a variety of different places. And there are still going to be town halls as part of this process. So as much as we've had these, these kind of standing groups that have been plugging away, doing the, doing the hard slog, working on the language, trying to bring in community member input along the way, there's also going to be opportunity for people to come in and do it to at least two town halls before the end. And of course, there'll be the official board of commissioner hearings as well, and lots of opportunity there also. So I just wanted to review that, because for me, it was kind of like a reminder once we, that now that we're at this point of what we've, what we've been through and what we've done. So, so let's celebrate that and then move forward. Any other quick comments or questions before we move into public testimony? All right, call for public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and addresses before speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, I ask you to identify who you represent. Limit remarks to a reasonable amount of time, that'd be about three minutes. That will allow all present to hear, have their voices heard, and for us to move on to the, to the, to the work at hand. Do we have anybody who is interested in speaking at this time from the public? Director Henrickson, did you hear of anyone prior to the meeting interested in speaking?
I did not, Chair Gardner. The only comments or communications I received were the letter this morning from the Oregon Conservation Coalition.
Thank you. All right, well, hearing none, the hearing is now closed. So as Director Henrickson said, we have a task at hand. And that, you can look at pages 42 and 43, or pages four and five of the staff report to figure out what that task is. I'm gonna pull that up here and review it really quickly. Thank you for pulling that up, yeah, there you go. So we have, under Roman numeral four, recommended actions and discussion. So we are to review the drafts of Goal 1 through 4 as revised. And those were revised last at the Joint Planning Commission Countywide CAC meeting of September 28th. And then we can also look at the discussion about, from the board of commissioners, from October 6th. And that's right above this, this Roman numeral four in the staff report here. And then action three is to actually move a recommendation forward to the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners for their approval. And, you know, there's kind of three things we can do. One, we can, you know, move to recommend the current document. Two, we can decline to make that recommendation. Or three, we can make some edits. And we'll be doing that also by motion and second formal, formal decision-making there to make those edits. Hopefully, a lot of our voices were heard in that last meeting. And we can be pretty expeditious moving these recommendations forward to the board of commissioners. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Let's go ahead and look at Goal 1, citizen involvement. So we can pull that section up. There we go, that part looks like it's page 48, right in the packet. I'm pulling that up on my big screen here so I can actually read it. Let's, let's start this discussion off. How do people feel about this final draft of the citizen involvement goal? Generally, any specific suggestions? Motion in a second.
Just to clarify, this, we're taking up the introductory material at this point, not specific objectives or goals?
I'll take either, I'll take either. I think I'm just, it would be great to work through the, great to work through the, yes, you know, I'm sorry. Director Henrickson, would you like to do a little introduction for, I'm sorry, the, do a little introduction for each goal as we walk through it? Does that make sense, or should we?
Sure, I can do that, just so everybody, including the public, is aware of what we're discussing. So the, the land use planning system in the state is based on 19 statewide goals. And they cover a range of topics from Goal 1, which is citizen involvement. They look at wetlands, they look at historic areas, they look at coastal resources, transportation, urbanization. It covers all aspects of the land use planning system. And so here in Clatsop County, of those 19 goals, 18 of them actually apply to our county. The only one that does not is Goal 15, which deals with the Willamette Valley area. So we are a very diverse community, very diverse county. And so while that's a blessing, we also have a lot of material to cover in our comprehensive plan. So Goal 1 deals specifically with citizen involvement, or as its more preferred term is today, public involvement. Because we don't want to be seen as excluding people who are not actual citizens of, you know, whether it be a city, or a county, or the country, or whatever. So public involvement is a preferred term right now. There has been a lot of discussion, I know at the board level about, and at the community advisory committee level, about how we handle public participation going forward. And right now, as Chair Gardner stated at the beginning of the meeting, the planning commission is the Committee for Citizen Involvement. And they have been since, you know, probably, I believe, the early 1990s, or maybe even farther. And so as part of that, And so, uh, as part of that, uh, the county is also supposed to have a, uh, public involvement plan as well that identifies how we reach out and obtain input from the, uh, public on land use matters and how we convey that up to the governing board and how we create a dialogue between the public and the board and the Planning Commission. And, uh, that plan is supposed to pull all of that together. So in the updates that we've made to goal one, uh, a lot of it was made to just address the fact that the world has changed so much in the past forty years and the way that we communicate with each other have changed significantly. So John, uh, or I'm going to put you on mute for a moment. Um, so we also tried to reflect, uh, some of the discussion that was, uh, captured at work sessions. And that's a discussion that we understood as staff, uh, to be what the board was, uh, bringing forward as a concern. Uh, so we know that the board has expressed interest in having more town hall meetings, uh, perhaps not continuing the local planning area citizen advisory committees moving forward once this process is done, uh, but, uh, becoming more involved in, in listening to the public input directly through those town hall meetings. And so we've made changes to reflect that. You'll see the comments that have been, uh, and the motions that were made at our September twenty-eighth meeting and the results of those. Uh, some of the motions did die for a lack of a second. And, uh, that's really my overview of goal one. And again, I'm always happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. So let's go ahead and, um, walk through the document, um, starting with the overview historic, historical perspective, starting with page forty-eight, just sort of make our way through it. And so I'll take any discussion or, you know, initial discussion or, or motions. Um, I will say, so I was looking through this last night and I was trying to figure out, you know, kind of what, what we've been wrestling with in this section. And I think, um, really, as, as Director Hendrickson had noted, the, the primary difference, differences of opinion are around how to involve the public. Um, specifically, the role of the Planning Commission and the Community Advisory Committees. Um, and connected to that are the planning areas, um, though that's not in this section. And, um, you know, how to, how to figure that out, you know, as a, as a larger community, as a county. And of course, the, the Board of Commissioners, um, has the finals, has the final say on that. And so I think there's been some kind of back and forth about it. Um, and I think that would be the, kind of the primary, um, you know, challenge with this section. If you'll look at page fifty-two, um, starting with objective one, um, and policy A, that's when, um, we start, first start discussing those differences. So the suggestion from, well, the, the recommendation from the, um, joint meeting was that the Board of Commissioners shall work with the Planning Commission and the general public to develop a program for public involvement. And so maybe, maybe some of that decision-making is punted from this document to, to this process where you can really, um, work together to figure out, you know, what's, what are the best tools to use going forward, um, as a county, um, rather than using this document to make those decisions. Initially, the board had, or sorry, staff and maybe the committees had suggested policy B, which has been deleted from this draft, um, that, that the citizen advisory committees continue. But really, they only meet once a year or so it's, and then as needed. So it's not like a, you know, like now where we meet every month, where those groups meet every month. But it's more of a, um, check-in, an annual check-in and then as needed, when issues come up. All right, I'm going to stop talking now because I'm the chair, I want to hear from you. Commissioner Orr, you're on mute, so I want to hear from you. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, and this is intentionally off mute this time. So my, um, first comment is that it's not apparent to me, uh, and forgive my oversight if that's the case. It's not apparent to me that there was a deletion of what I heard Chair Gardner refer to as the deleted policy D. And so I just want to know in that, uh, how she concludes that other than be more informed than, than me. The, uh, the, uh, draft of the objective and policies of the comprehensive plan, uh, objective two and lots of other places seems to have a line drawn through, uh, any place citizen advisory committee meetings, uh, is, is written. So I'm just seeking clarification and a citation for where we are on the continued existence of citizen advisory committees, that's all.
Yeah, sorry, I was saying policy B, so you can look there right at the beginning. It's objective one, policy A, and there's actually two policy Bs and the second one has been deleted. Um, but that would be great. Um, Director Hendrickson, could you kind of walk through where we're at with, you know, the feelings of what might happen instead of the current configuration, um, in the vision of some of the, at least some of the county commissioners?
Yes, so when the citizen advisory committees in each planning area were reconstituted for the comprehensive plan update process, uh, the, they were specifically formed just for this process. And so once this process is complete, at that point, those committees would be dissolved. What we've heard in the different planning area committee meetings is that there is, um, very strong support among the committee members to continue these citizen advisory committees moving forward, uh, even after the comprehensive plan update is completed in order to, uh, provide an additional avenue for citizens to weigh in on land use planning issues. What we're hearing from the board, or at least as staff understands it during work sessions, is that, uh, the board, at this point in time, would like to dissolve the planning area committees as they were originally constituted, uh, once this process is complete. And what the board has asked for is an increase in the number of town hall meetings, similar to what we've been doing with our short-term rental town hall meetings, where we, uh, are basically opening it up for a public forum. Uh, the board has the opportunity to, um, sit and hear, uh, the public comment and hear it firsthand, uh, and to move more in that direction. And that's my current understanding of where we are at this point in time.
Thank you. So just a clarification then, um, so under what's currently po- policy B, it says the Committee for Citizen Involvement, which right now is the Planning Commission, but is proposed to not be the Planning Commission in the future, um, potentially, um, should hold at least one meeting per year. So are, is that the town halls that you're talking about or is that a separate thing?
Uh, so to the best of my understanding, I have not heard the board say that they would be replacing the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Uh, they certainly can do that under state statute that is permitted and they would have to notify Department of Land Conservation and Development, uh, if they do decide to do that. But my understanding i- is that they were just looking to dissolve the planning area citizen advisory committees, which are, uh, different from the Committee for Citizen Involvement. So that's my understanding.
So, so if it's.
I don't, I don't think that we've had any clear direction from the, from the board yet on, uh, who or what will be the, uh, Committee for Citizen Involvement, so.
Right, well, that's thus policy A, right? So policy A is to figure that out. And then policy B would be whatever that is, then instead of the CACs, you have this, um, Committee for Citizen Involvement holding one meeting per year in each of the areas during which anybody who has been or wants to be part of a CAC could participate. Because it seems to me. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, those meetings, whatever form the Committee for Citizen Involvement takes, whether it's you as the Planning Commission or the board or some new third entity that fulfills that role, these would definitely be public meetings because we do want to get that public input, uh, on comprehensive planning and any land use issues that are arising in the county. Uh, so it's, it's more than just, um, or what it should not be really is a comment on building permits or, uh, things like that, but on large land use issues that are, um, coming in that we need to address. So, you know, for example, short-term rentals, maybe not the best example, but it's the one that immediately comes to mind, uh, where we do have in our zoning code in arch cave language about standards with short-term rentals. And so those are, you know, good areas or housing perhaps out in the Swenson area where there's a lot of pressure for additional housing development. But we've got a lot of areas that are zoned for five acre minimum lot sizes or parcel sizes. So maybe that's something that a committee, the Committee for Citizen Involvement could, uh, get involved in and get that public input about should there be changes to the zoning to have a zone that requires smaller minimum parcel sizes, which would help ease some of the, uh, housing, uh, pressure that's, you know, taking place in that particular area of the county. Did, did that address your question, Chair Gardner?
I think so. I'm still a little, um, lost as to whether that would be the town halls or there would be additional town halls.
I can't answer that question. I don't have enough direction from the board at this point, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Strickland, I see your hands, sorry if it's been a bit. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Commissioner Strickland. Shoot, we should have tested the beginning here again. Maybe you could call in because we can't hear you. Are you going to make me read your comments again? I really want to hear from you, so if you can call in, that'd be great. Or if you could disconnect and try to reconnect, then hopefully that might solve it. I know sometimes it works and sometimes it was, doesn't work for you over there. Sorry about that, Commissioner. Commissioner Bronson or Huang, uh, haven't heard from you yet. Any thoughts on this section? I see Commissioner Farrar's hand up there.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what the meaning of policy A is. Uh, the Board of Commissioners shall work with the public to determine the optimal form of the Committee for Citizen Involvement. That sounds fine, but I'm a little unclear exactly what is meant by the words "shall work with the public." I find that the current Board of Commissioners have done a lot of business in work sessions where the commissioners converse with one another about topics, but the public is excluded from really participating. All they can do is listen. I want to ensure that the way that policy is written right now on this document we're looking at, that when it says the commissioners shall work with the public, it means that from the beginning, the public is involved in the conversation at the start of any change to the comp plan or any issue related to comprehensive land use planning. The public should be in the, involved in the beginning, not commenting about something, some policy that has been formulated during a commissioner's meeting. So, does, does anybody else have concerns or comments about the rather terse statement there? Should it be expanded perhaps to state more specifically that the public will be invited in a two-way conversation with the Board of Commissioners under these, um, under that policy A?
Just a clarification, Commissioner Farrar and for everyone, that, um, the draft that we're looking at now, if you look at the comments to the right of the text, those were the motions made, um, at the Joint, uh, CAC Planning Commission meeting. Um, and so, um, you know, this has been edited and so we maybe vote, like when we're voting, I think we're voting on the, the edited document that come, that came out of that meeting. So instead of policy A, um, the, that group recommended that we recommend, um, the Board of Commissioners shall work with the Planning Commission and the general public to develop a program for public involvement, including determining the optimal form for the Committee for Citizen Involvement, which we might not use the word citizen now that I'm thinking. And then also above there, there was another, uh, motion that was passed that said, um, permanently retaining the community advisory committees as currently cost constituted. So basically, um, re-instituting, uh, what was originally policy B. But I hear you, I've heard other people express that same concern, Commissioner Farrar. So thank you for expressing that here. Uh, Commissioner, um, Kwong, thank you for speaking up.
Um, yes, I guess, um, my concern is, I guess, the implement, implementing the policy of, uh, of the policy, um, do we have or anyone has ideas of how to involve, uh, the public? Because it seems very difficult to, to get people to even come to the meeting, let alone be involved in the two-way process of trying to, um, affect any of the policy. And much of the policy is really, um, decided upon the very small group of people that we supposedly be representing the public. And I'm not exactly sure, uh, on how we are to, uh, get the public more involved in the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Kwong. Um, I think we should move along to, um, I, I wanted to point out that there were some specific, um, comments in the Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition, um, draft. Well, I'll start actually by, I want to read some comments. So Commissioner Orr said, um, that the, he would like to see the CACs implement the goal and should be encouraged to continue along with the town halls. Um, and, uh, Commissioner Strickland said, um, he wanted to reiterate, um, you know, we were having the discussion around who is the Committee for Citizen Involvement, that it is the Planning Commission and, um, and he concurs with Commissioner Farrar's comments on that. Um, if you look at, um, since we didn't get any verbal comment, I'm going to look at the comments that we've gotten from, um, via, via mail, um, from the, um, from Oregon Shores. And, um, they suggested that throughout the document, um, you know, that we not use the word citizen and that we also not use the word residence because that's extended, more of an exclusive term. And of course, a lot of our community members are not necessarily, um, uh, residents, I mean, especially in my area, there's a lot of people very invested in our communities that are, um, vacation, um, homeowners. Um, and I think that's where that comes from. Um, but they suggest that the Committee for Citizen Involvement instead be called the Committee, uh, Community Involvement Advisory Committee throughout the document. And they also note that, um, DLCD and LCDC are really working to, um, around community involvement, public participation, to, um, do work around diversity, equity and inclusion, environmental justice and, um, and translation should be a part of that. And, um, so ensuring, uh, current communication methods and techniques that are sensitive to those things as we go through our racial reckoning in Oregon. That's what I can. Swallow right now from that letter. Any other? Do we have any? Like actual motions and seconds for this section? Do we want to go ahead and? And make a recommendation of this section as it came out of the. Community Advisory Committee, or do we want to take sections that have been edited and make a few more tweaks before we move that along? If so, I'm. Asking you all to make a motion in a second. If it's easier, you can write your motion in the chat and read it out loud. That's what I often do.
Well, I. I'm not going to make a motion quite yet at this point, but I. I will say that. As a point of discussion, I do feel. That the county. The Community Development Staff. The Board of Commissioners and the Clatsop County Planning Commission. Are all very committed to getting public input. And there's no question in my mind that. A great deal of effort has been put out by. All three of those bodies to. Bring a variety of people. Into the discussion early on and. Uh, you know, this, this meeting is a perfect example of probably why so few people do spend hours. Sitting in these types of meetings. They can be a little bit tedious. But that's just part of the process and there's not much we can do about it. But. I for one do feel. That. The people in this decision making. Point in time on this plan. Are really committed to bringing the public. Into the discussion and that in the introductory material on this goal one. There are a number of. Ideas described which do a good job of at least potentially opening up. The process to the public. How you get the public. To be interested enough to take their time, I do not know. But. So my comments that sort of. Show some level of skepticism over certain wording and so on. It shouldn't be construed to mean that I believe there's anything. Devious or. Any subterfuge here to try to. Keep the public from being involved. I don't feel that that's true. And I for one. Am okay with. The objectives and policies as reworded by the comments that were. Voted on and. Approved by a majority at the September 28th meeting. So I'll leave it at that and let somebody make a motion if they wish.
I wonder if someone might entertain, because this comes up a lot, that the word citizen be replaced. By public or citizen involvement at the or community involvement at the discretion of staff throughout the document. I wonder if we could make a more like a general. Motion to that effect, if anyone would be interested in that.
Can I just say so moved? I move to. Leave it to the discretion of the Community Development Staff. To word the document. Such that. Expressions of including. Those members that have. Property or residences or. Frequent our county in various ways may be. Referred to. As public. Or citizen. Depending on what staff. Decides is most appropriate and will be most widely understood. To. Attempt to include. Everyone. In. The provisions in our comprehensive plan. I for one. Do. Prefer the. Term public over citizen. Because. The word citizen. Does have a certain legal standing. As well as just a general one, whereas public. Is more broad. And should be understood to include. More people. So just to state it more simply. Leave it to the Community Development Staff to word this document. In such a way that. It shows. Persons to be involved in any input. Is as broad as possible.
All right. So the motion is still kind of wordy there, Chris. I think the motion is that is that. Staff use their discretion to use inclusive language throughout the document such as. Public participation in community. Does that, does that do it?
That's what I was trying to say. Can't speak as eloquently as you. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that? I hear a second from Commissioner Strickland. Any discussion before we move on to a quick vote on that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, I feel like we haven't. I think we maybe don't have any additional changes to this section as presented. And when you look back, because one of our tasks is to make sure that the comments of the county commissioners have been thought about and potentially integrated and. I don't see any real. Comments that are in contrast, these comments here that are presented to us. Knowing that I know some of the individual commissioners will have thoughts about. The CACs in particular, but. And then the specific comments from Commissioner Banks started section goal three. So. Do we want to go ahead and make a motion to? Recommend, let's see. Make a motion to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve. Goal one as amended. And that would include the joint meeting and our change today.
Second.
Okay, so John, are you making that motion? I can't make.
Oh, that's right. You can't make that motion. I move that we adopt. The first, the first goal as. Is drafted and discussed and reviewed by the planning commission today.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Kwong, second thought. Discussion. All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously and we'll move on to goal two. Thank you. Um, I pass it back to Director Henrickson to present the staff report on goal two, land use planning.
Thank you. So goal two is really what what is called one of the process goals. So. Goals wanted to basically spell out how we. Process land use planning in the state and then trickling down into the county. So as part of the county's land use planning system, we've identified. We being the county overall in 1980. Identified six different designations of land use within the county. It's development areas. Which are the most intense, tensely zoned areas in the county. Arch Cape is an example of a development area. The rural community zonings are considered development areas. They're typically areas that are served by water and or sewer systems. They're more urbanized in terms of their overall land use pattern. They may contain a mix of residential and commercial and industrial type of uses. From there, we move into the more rural areas. Our rural lands include our residential agriculture zones. And then we move more into the resource and conservation areas. So we have a conservation, what is currently conservation forest land. Conservation other resources, which would be your natural areas. We have rural agriculture lands and then we have natural areas. So one of the changes that staff is proposing in the plan is that the designation that's called conservation forest lands. Just be revised to say forest lands. I think that there's been. I think the term conservation gives an impression that the county is going to go in and just. Put these lands aside and never touch them. And if you read what goal four is in terms of forest lands, it's to preserve working forests and active forest uses. So that's one change that staff has recommended is that we just change the term terminology from conservation forest lands just to forest lands. And that would probably be more consistent with goal four when we get there. Uh, in terms of the objectives that are in here, we did, if you saw the original goal two, it's several hundred pages long and it contains a complete list of every. Exception that we've ever taken to any of the goals in the comprehensive plan. So we did reference those. Or we are retaining those by reference, but we're not going to be listing them again in the comprehensive plan. They are on record here in the. Plant, uh, planning department and community development. Uh, on September 28th, there were some recommended revisions that were made by the Joint Planning Commission and Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. And those are labeled here in the section to the right where the comments are. I think that the biggest. Point of discussion for today and moving forward is the county currently has six planning areas. And they're divided based on geography, geology, social and kind of cultural issues. And so. We have a northeast planning area. We have a Lewis and Clark, only Woluski planning area. We have three in the south of the county, Elsie Jewel, Seaside Rural and Southwest Coastal. Uh, and then we have the Clatsop Plains planning area. So out of those six, the Board of Commissioners in their work session discussion. Have talked about. Realigning the boundaries of those six planning areas to be coterminous with the Planning Commissioner boundaries. And so we've talked about this a little at our September 28th meeting. There, I also made some, had some discussion with the board on October 6th at their meeting. Just so that we understand how and why the planning areas were set up. And how they're different from the Board of Commissioner districts. It doesn't mean that they cannot be coterminous. There's nothing that would prohibit that. But they were set up for slightly different reasons and typically the planning area boundaries have not moved. Whereas if we go with a coterminous. Set of boundaries and reduce down to five districts, those boundaries would be shifted every 10 years. Once we go through a redistricting. Process based on the decennial census. So that's probably the biggest point of discussion for today. And on that note, I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commissioners may have.
Thank you, Director Henrickson. Questions, comments, motions from the commission? So I, at that last meeting, I think Director Henrickson shared. Um, a map. That. Showed the different planning areas lying on top of the Commissioner districts and being a southwest resident myself, I'd be. Um. I just like to note that. You know, Lewis and Clark and Northeast and Clatsup Plains don't really change significantly. When, I mean, there's, there's definitely changes, but not, you know, huge changes. Um, when you make that shift, the the real change is that the area around Warrenton gets a planning area and most of that area is actually the city. So there's additional voices around that unit that would be directly to who is currently in Commissioner Quilas, Chiriquila's. Um, seat. Um, but the real loser is the southwest. And so what happens is that Seaside Rural, which is in our highway 26 as well as highway 53, which is kind of. A small, like, you know, five acres as well as farmland. And then of course, Elsie Jewel, which is primarily forestry with some homes. Get merged with this, what they call the Southwest Coastal. And and, you know, it's, it's based on population, but of course, Southwest Coastal is under quite a lot of development pressure. Not because the number of people that live here, but because of the kind of more resort quality. Um, of that community. So it's, it's really distinct. Actually, in fact, I, I had talked to the, the members that live in Elsie Jewel area that are. Leading up the community planning effort there now on the local CAC and they were saying they don't even feel comfortable. Developing the plan for Seaside Rural because they feel like even that is different enough. That. That they'd love more participation and so that they can make sure that they're representing that community better, let alone. The culture and the history and the land use type around Arch Cape and Cove Beach and Arcadia where I live. It's, they're very distinct places. It's also a very large landscape. So deciding where you're going to hold a meeting and really matters there. Very dispersed. And so. I do feel like one of the things behind this. Effort is to reduce the voice of Southwest Coastal in the county. And so I do think that's a, an unfortunate. Direction. On the part of the Board of Commissioners. I know there are some loud voices down here. But there's also some important work being done. So. That's my two cents.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, Commissioner Orr, I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I would just join in. My concern about any effort to. Diminish participation or the volume. Of. The public citizens or residents or non residents who have an interest in area and if they, in their areas and if. Uh, that should occur. As. As that concern is voiced by. Chair Gardner. I. I disapprove of that. I think that all efforts consistent should be made consistent with goal one. To enable and empower and encourage. Citizen participation. You know, history has shown that. Participation ebbs and flows. And it swings from who's ever in control. Or who's just who's ever oxes being gored, so to speak, but. I would like to see the trend. Going in the direction of more participation. And I just have some concerns or. They're somewhat amorphous concerns. I apologize for that, but. Concerns that we are now perhaps. Experiencing a change in the winds with regard to public. Participation because there is a dislike of what is being heard at the grassroots level. And there may be other people who have opposing points of view, but nothing in this. System of public participation. That we have in Clatsop County discourages them or deters them. Uh, one bit. Based on what I know. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Orr. Um, so I'll point out, so if we're looking at objective one, policy C. Um, the last meeting, if you look to the right in the comments, um. the last meeting, if you look to the right in the comments, they, the joint group voted to, to retain, I think at some point, to expand the existing planning areas to include adjacent estuary river and ocean areas and the unincorporated areas of north, north of Warrington that were, I think, inexplicably excluded before. So that was added there. And then I also, I know Commissioner Orr had a question about objective five, and so that had been previously removed. And in that meeting, the joint meeting, if you look at comment GH3, the objective five, but not those policies A and B, were reinstated. And instead, a new policy would just be objectives and policy should be based on the best available science and follow state direction, which is what we heard from, especially Commissioner Toya in the work sessions, as being of importance. So what did go away were policy A and B around wetlands, but that may be more appropriate for the goal five, which we discussed in the future. I will also note that the current policy C says that they will explore the planning areas, but it doesn't make a decision. The planning area is being lined up with the Commissioner districts at the current, the current time. Okay, any other questions? Or I would entertain a motion if people didn't want to keep working on it. I was just looking back at Oregon Shore's letter under goal two.
Well, I seem to still be confused about what objective one is saying. Are, are what we voting on, what we're going to vote on here, is that saying that we think it's appropriate for the county planning areas to be redrawn so that they are coterminous with Board of Commissioners district boundaries? Because I thought in the meeting on September 28th, it was decided that that really wasn't logical to do it that way, that planning areas are meant for one purpose and county commissioner districts are meant for another purpose, which is a distribution, a fair distribution of people within the county and their representation. So am I missing something here? Or we, we still are doing that point with the boundaries?
Director Hendrickson, I know we did vote in that meeting to retain the CACs at some point. Do you see that? I'm just kind of scrolling up and down.
Well, the motion that was made by Jan Mitchell on policy C wanted to expand the existing, so the six planning areas. So there was no vote or support to make the boundaries coterminous.
Oh, not to, no, not to make them coterminous with the Planning Commission. But I thought at one point, there was a motion to just retain the, the CACs, the, oh, sorry, the planning areas as, as historic. Is that in goal one, maybe? That's in goal one, I think.
Yeah, I could not say Chair Gardner.
Okay, so sorry, if you go back to goal one, policy A, Charles Day seconded by Pac Quirrin, permanently retain, oh, CACs as currently constituted, but that's not the same as the planning areas. So I think maybe that was left out. So if that's something we want to clarify in this meeting, we can. We're not. So if we wanted to, under objective one, policy C, we could suggest, recommend, we're just making recommendations now, that, that the planning areas continue to be the current planning areas. And then that motion then also expands them to include the estuary river and ocean areas and unincorporated areas. Just to be very clear. Otherwise, if we leave it, then it's just that, that the county commission will, or the county, it says generally, it doesn't say who, will explore that potential transition from the current planning areas to the county commission.
Well, I, for one, feel that it would not be beneficial to land use planning to change the boundaries to be coterminous with the Board of Commissioner districts. I do support the idea of including those parts of the county that were kind of left out of the existing planning areas, mainly along the Columbia River and that small part of land north of Warrington City. So I would like that policy C to say something more to the effect that it would be appropriate to keep the, what is it, six planning areas?
Yeah, there's six.
That we now have? And with, with adjusting the boundaries to those existing districts to include, as the highlighted area on the, on the right of the screen shows there, to include adjacent estuary river and ocean areas and the unincorporated areas north of Warrington. And I would leave out the word about creating boundaries that are coterminous.
Commissioner Farrar, I'm going to suggest that you make a motion to amend policy C and read what's crossed out and the motion from the last meeting. If that's what you're meaning to do. Does that make sense?
It kind of does. I, I apologize. I guess I'm getting a little confused as to what has been struck from the document and what is being changed and will become what we approved to send on to the Board of Commissioners. But if I understand you, I move that, under, is it objective one, policy C?
Yes.
Goal two, I move that we retain the wording that is struck in the copy that we're looking at. The county shall be divided into six sub-county planning areas. And they're listed Clatsup Plains, Elsie Jewel, Lewis and Clark, only Woluski, northeast, Seaside Rural, southwest coastal, a citizens advisory, and to expand the boundaries so that they include the estuary river and ocean areas and unincorporated areas north of Warrington. A citizens advisory committee shall be formed for each planning area. Each citizen advisory committee shall conduct at least one meeting per year to, I can't really be below that, to provide for public input, I suppose.
Yeah, and so that's a motion, and we have a second? If no second, then that dies from lack of a second. Sounds like that's not going to work. Should we go ahead and just move to leave it as is?
I'm sorry, I was, I meant to second the motion.
Okay, sounds like Commissioner Orr is seconding that motion.
Too late.
And so a motion has been, a motion, there has been a motion, and it's been seconded to reinstate the language instead of the first sentence there to say the county shall be divided into six sub-county planning areas, Clatsup Plains, Elsie Jewel, Lewis and Clark, only Woluski, northeast, south, Seaside Rural, southwest coastal. And the citizen advisory committee, and a citizen advisory committee shall be formed for each planning area. Each citizen advisory committee shall conduct at least one meeting per year to discuss issues and provide recommended themes on the proposed planning areas. Oh, and I left out up there that, the motion from the last meeting, that those areas will include adjacent estuary river and ocean areas and unincorporated areas north of Warrington. And discussion.
I, the only point I'll make is this in no way is meant to suggest that the six area citizen advisory committees are the only way the public can interact. This is just one of the many ways. And that these would be open public meetings and that there could be town hall meetings held as well. And that there would be discussions allowed at the county planning commission meetings during public comment period. And there might be other special meetings and ways to electronically voice opinions through surveys and assessments made by the community development department. So I hope that when this is looked at, it's looked at as just one of the many ways that are being suggested to allow the public to participate.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Any other discussion on goal two before we move on to? Oh, sorry. So I think we're ready. Unless we, people have other proposed changes, I think we're ready to make a motion on this goal as amended. And so we can move on to goal three. So I'm looking for a motion. Let's see, I move to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revisions to goal two as amended. That's what I'm looking for.
I move to.
Go ahead. Did we, are we voting on Commissioner Farrar's motion? Or is that something different than what the Chair Gardner has now proposed to vote?
Oh, I apologize. Did we not get to that vote? My apologies. I'm boggy brained already, and I'm only on goal two. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes, ayes have it, the yeses have it. One dissenting, thank you. I guess I'll just say that I wouldn't be surprised that if that is reversed again, that we give that recommendation when it gets to the Board of Commissioners. And I'll just also note that I welcome that discussion that was proposed in the, in the text. And that I've also been a little unhappy, I guess, I'll just say about, you know, there's, there's kind of the good of the county in the long term, and then there's the frustration with current people. And, and I feel like sometimes this stuff comes out of frustrations with current people. And then the, what's best for the county in the long term gets lost in the wash of it. And so I'm hoping that we can get beyond, you know, who's currently talking, because the fact of the matter is, you know, most of those who are currently talking, some of those who are currently talking will not be even present in the county in the next, after 20 years or so. So, and this is a document that, that lives on beyond all of us, so. Okay, so now I'm looking for, I think, if we're ready, a motion to go ahead and approve goal two as amended. Who wants to do it?
I'll make a motion and move that we adopt the objectives and policies as amended for goal two and recommend that the Clatsup Board of Commissioners approve these changes.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded, decision and discussion? Director Hendrickson, did you write that down? Could you repeat it for us, as the motion? It's been moved and seconded that.
The, I'm going to paraphrase. So basically, the motion is that the Planning Commission recommends the Board of Commissioners approve goal two with the amendments that were made at today's meeting and the September 28th joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Citizen Advisory Committee.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Let's move on to goal three. Recognizing that is 1209, we're just going to kind of keep on moving through the document unless people in the room need a break. I recognize that that's necessary occasionally. So just let me know if you feel like you want to take a break. All right, goal three starts on page 68 of your packet. Director Hendrickson, would you please present the staff report?
So goal three deals with agricultural resource lands. And so those are specifically the lands that are identified as high-value farmlands containing class one or class two type soils. And those areas and parcels are designated as exclusive farm use or EFU in our zoning code. When we talk about goal three and the resource, agricultural resource lands, we are not talking about the residential agriculture zones or small, small farms and areas that are not zoned EFU. Goal three is specifically focused on that EFU zone and those farmlands. And when we look at what we do with goal three, just like we will look at with goal four, we're very constrained by state statute. State statute spells out very specific uses that are permitted within the EFU zone. It has very specific procedures about how you would go about building different types of housing in terms of farmworker housing or farm dwellings or non-farm dwellings. So it's not a goal where we can open it up and say that we want to just convert our agricultural land into more housing because we have a housing crisis. Goal three is specifically set up to protect our farmlands from that type of development. And so the bar is very high to be able to construct a dwelling or do certain types of uses within the EFU zone. And if you really want to open it up for future development, then the way that we would have to go about that would be to go through a goal exception process. And that would basically, we would have to document to the state that there is no other land available within the county. And we try to shift our more dense And we try to shift our more dense development to the urban growth boundaries and the incorporated areas. And that's under Goal 14, dealing with urbanization. So if we want to make that case to the state, we would have a very long and lengthy procedure that we would have to go through. So when we look at our policies associated with this particular goal, we want to make sure that in the back of our heads, we're thinking of it in terms of exclusive farm use zone property. With regard to the discussion at the board, I believe at our last work session, Commissioner Banks did have a couple of specific comments regarding Goal Three. The first one was in the narrative section of Goal Three under the Agriculture and Wildlife paragraphs. She recommended that we stress that as you, we provide educational materials instead of creating policies with the goal being that we want to let property owners decide if and how to address wildlife issues based upon their own individual needs as a property owner. She wanted the plan to continue to provide options and educational materials instead of providing additional regulations. So that was one comment. And then her second comment related to Goal Three, Objective Five, Policy E, which was previously Policy H. And again, this is to incorporate objectives and policies. Sorry, I have to read it here. She wanted to change incorporate objectives and policies to explore objectives and policies. And this is related to climate change, adaptation and mitigation. And this also was generally the consensus of the board is that because the county staff does not have the expertise to craft these policies to address climate change, that we should be monitoring what policies are being drafted at the state level and then adapt that state guidance to address specific issues here within the county. The general consensus, as I understood it, was that this policy should be less definitive as the county will need to be able to evolve and adapt, no pun intended, to this issue over time. And we will need to continually refine it. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Questions for Director Hendrickson on the staff report? Or on the County Commission input? I had a question. I had, I'm vaguely remembering a comment that you might have made in one of the work sessions, Commissioner, sorry, Director Hendrickson, regarding the Elk Project and how did the county obligate itself to make policies around that issue?
The obligations that the county committed to in our Declaration of Cooperation are not necessarily commitments to policy changes, but commitments to review certain sections of code or to provide tools in terms of maybe allowing different types of fencing or taller fencing or providing educational materials about different types of fencing or landscaping that's available. The, the Declaration of Cooperation does not mandate that the county is going to only limit vegetation to a certain type or only allow certain types of fences. And furthermore, the declaration, even though it's been signed by all the parties, is non-binding. So.
Thank you. So I'll note on that one that it says policies that provide a range of landscaping and fencing, blah, blah, blah. It says should be considered. It doesn't say shall. So that's, I'll say more flexible than the other language. But it's, but we could, in response to Commissioner Banks' suggestions, change that sentence to be more flexible, showing our willingness to work with the commissioners and such things. I'm, okay, so let's start with the narrative. Does anyone have any comments that they want to make on the narrative or suggested changes before we move into the objectives? Goals and objectives? In that issue.
I'm trying to figure out on with respect to some of the comments that I believe County Commissioner Banks had made, one of them had to do with including some language that either supported or endorsed landowners of agricultural land to deal with wildlife issues in a way they choose. It is, that's paraphrased, but that comment was made. I wondered if that was then worked into a suggested wording change for a specific objective, objective or policy.
No, it was not, Commissioner Farrar.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no motions on that section, we can always go back there if we wanted to do some tweaks there. But let's move on to the objectives and policies. And we worked on this quite a bit in that joint meeting. How are people feeling about this final draft to move on to their as a recommendation to the commissioners or their other potential edits? If you go down to Objective Three. Wait. Sorry, Objective Five, that was the one that the commissioner, so formally, what was formerly H, but it's now E. Okay, so that was the climate change one, the county shall incorporate objectives and policies. So Commissioner Banks was suggesting that instead of saying that the county shall, that they will explore. So it softens that. Of course, you know, so that's an opportunity for us to, to respond to that or not. Again, she's an individual commissioner versus the larger body, but I'm not sure how that would go over with the larger body. Discussion or motions on either individual sections of the section or just a larger motion to, to recommend, let's see, a motion to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve revisions to Goal Three as amended. Commissioner Orr.
I'll make that motion that we make approval.
I moved to recommend.
I moved to recommend that we adopt Goal Three as amended.
Okay, second.
Second.
So I'm going to clean that up a little bit here. So Commissioner Orr has moved to recommend that the Board of Commissioner approve the revisions of Goal Three as amended. And Commissioner Farrar has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Like we have, we have a consensus there on that one. That's great. All right, let's move ahead to Goal Four, Forestry. Director Hendrickson, would you please present your staff report?
Yes, thank you. So we've had quite a bit of discussion on Goal Four over the past probably 18 months. There's concerns that have been raised in some of the Planning Area Advisory Committee meetings regarding the, the strength of the Forest Practices Act. And is it adequate to protect drinking water resources and watersheds that many of our communities rely upon for their potable water supply? There's also a lot of different moving pieces higher up at the state level in terms of the Lynn County lawsuit and also the Habitat Conservation Plan. And then I believe it was in early 2020, there was a memorandum of understanding that was signed between different environmental groups and representatives of the timber industry that we're going to obligate them moving forward to work on some joint issues and come up with some sort of joint consensus on those. I'm not exactly sure whatever happened with that memorandum of understanding or where it might be in the process. But there are different things that are coming down from the state level that will eventually impact us as these items move forward over the next few years through the court districts and the, and the legislature. So, let's see here. In terms of our comments and items that were addressed, there are motions again on the right-hand side of what happened at the September 28th meeting. In terms of specific comments from the board on our last review on October 6th, again, Commissioner Banks had comments on two specific areas. One is in the narrative under the Recreation Section. And she had recommended that all the different campgrounds within the county be included in that, in that section of narrative. And as staff, we are recommending that actually some of those should be included in Goal Eight and not Goal Four. Goal Four, like Goal Three, is focused only on resource forest land. So it's not every area in the, in the county that has a campground on it or, you know, some sort of public park. It's specifically tied to those lands that are designated currently as conservation forest lands. And that in this case, in our county, are zoned either F80, which is forestry with an 80 acre minimum lot size, or agriculture forestry, which is kind of a combination of farm forest land that's designated as resource. So again, keeping that in mind as we look at our policies. So staff, going back to Commissioner Banks' recommendation on the narrative section, we are still recommending a staff separating the campgrounds out so that only those that are on resource forest land would be included in Goal Four. Her other comment related to Objective One, Policy F, she felt that there should be some wordsmithing done to it to help clarify the meaning and intent of that policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
So I think for those of you who aren't running around in the document like I am on a big screen, Goal One, Policy F, is around designation of new park and recreation areas. Whether, how to assess public need and the impact on adjacent forests, forest lands. Is that, that's correct, right, Director Hendrickson? That's the one she was talking about?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, discussion, Planning Commissioners on Goal Four, Forestland. How are we feeling about this final draft, moving it forward? As a recommendation to the County Commission, is there any small changes that, that you would like to make as a body? Or would you like to move it forward? I will point out there are some comments from Oregon Shores around Goal Four around like the narrative and the Habitat Conservation Plan process. Also about drinking water in forest land, which is always a hot topic.
I have something.
Commissioner Orr.
Um, this seems kind of in the weeds. But, and I would preface this by saying that I do work for Trails and Recovery, who among some of the things they do is recover wood fiber on site following logging operations to be utilized for biomass energy generation and yard material, beauty bark and the like. So with that, with that point made, Objective One, Policy L, reads, "Leaving wood fiber on site could be considered utilization for fertilization purposes and also provides habitat for numerous species, including salamander." And I guess that's innocuous enough, but it bears mentioning and considering this policy, how much methane is generated from leaving wood fiber on site following logging operations. It's common, many consider it cost, not cost effective to recycle those materials. But if the cost doesn't take into account greenhouse gas generation, considerable greenhouse, greenhouse gas generation, then it should. And that is my comment and concern with respect to Objective One, Policy L, that I have concerns about leaving wood fiber on site.
I believe that that policy has been deleted from this draft. Let's see. Am I correct? The last commissioner, Director Hendrickson, I believe that that policy L is, is gone from that, this draft, correct?
Correct. The current draft does show that both Policy K and L are recommended for deletion.
Yes.
Okay, and that, that, see, I was looking at page 85 and the, you know, the specific issues discussed by the board. So the clarification, which currently I overlooked, is found on.
Page 94, which I think was just on the screen here. But if you go to page 94, that's where the actual policy is. So I think they discussed it in that meeting and then it was, it was changed in the joint meeting.
Thank you.
I'll just add to the discussion here. You know, it's a pretty complicated issue really, as to what to do with this, I'll call it slash in timber harvest areas. I for one, think it's very important to try to reintroduce the debris, the woody debris left behind into the soil, to build the soil and make the soil more of a surface that precipitation can be absorbed into, reduce landsliding and flood runoff and sheet wash and all those things. So all this, I'm not really making an idea for a change here, but I hope that when the county looks at these things, they'll, they'll look at it from all sides. I agree, there's greenhouse gas that comes from the, the slow oxidation of carbonaceous material, but it's a natural process to have some of that going on. And our forest soils are being damaged by constantly removing so much carbon from them. It ain't, it's just a comment. Sorry, I know we're out of time. So I'll leave it at that.
Please don't apologize. Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Strickland? I can't hear you, but do you want to type it or do you want to call in? I wish I could read lips. I see him writing, so I'm just waiting a minute to see if we can get his comment. I apologize for the delay, everyone. I see him writing, so I'm just waiting a minute to see if we can get his comment. I apologize for the delay, everyone. Um, so Commissioner Strickland is asking about the Boy Scout camp at the northeast corner of Colby Lake. Whether it's zoned F-80 and how does it fit into requirements laid out here? Director Henriksen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I don't know specifically what the Boy Scout camp is, uh, zoned. If it is F-80, then it would be subject to all these policies and to the F-80 zoning. That's, uh, in our land and water development and use code. I'm not exactly sure what, uh, Commissioner Strickland is trying to, uh, have answered. So I'm not sure if I answered his question.
Thank you. He might be typing, but in the meantime, does anybody else have any? Comments? Um, do you have any motions? I'm entertaining. So the, uh, staff person Julia Decker has, um, answered actually that that property is, uh, O- OPR. I think that's like open space recreation zoning, not, um, forest land. So it doesn't apply to this, um, this school. Open space parks and recreation. Thanks. Um, any, okay, I think maybe if no one's going to make a motion to make any particular changes, I might move on to our final motion and we can. Oh, sorry, Julia Decker just made a clarification that a portion of that property is an F-80. Um, but I think in terms of this more general discussion about goal four, unless you have specific reason to bring this specific property into this conversation, Commissioner Strickland, we might move on. If you have any particular, um, comments or discussion around the goals generally, love to hear them. Okay, um, so. I'm looking for a motion. It would sound something like this. I move to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the revisions to goal four as amended.
I move, uh, this is Commission Ferrer. I move, uh, to recommend to the Quetzal Board of Commissioners to approve. The wording.
Revisions to goal four.
For goal four. Of the top plan.
As amended. Thank you. Uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
John Orr seconds. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to, uh, recommend to the Board of Commissioners that, um, they approve the revisions to goal four as amended. Or something to that effect. Discussion. Anything to say on that? Just getting ready to wait, getting ready to vote. Um, sorry, go ahead.
No, I gue- I guess, I guess I don't really have much. I've. I just wonder if, you know, well, this whole process, I mean, what the, I'm, this really concerned me with all the click cuts that, um, I don't know how we. How actually the land can ever be. Uh, regenerated. We keep on clear cutting, click, click cutting, um. And I don't know what, by leaving the, uh, um, the leftover wood to, um, try to get the land to regenerate. Um, I mean, I don't know how many times you can actually do that and continually stripping the land of it, uh, its resources and be able to think that this land can, uh, grow back a forest and continually, um, cashing out these trees. Uh, it just, just really saddened to me. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Huang. Other discussion before we move to a vote?
Well, I, I agree with the Commissioner Lam about that. There are limits to what you can do to land before it, um, really alters. What resources left and everything's interconnected. So the changes that occur to some of these lands will affect other things within the county such as water resources, quality of air. Um, weather patterns, a whole lot of things. And I know people know that. Most people have learned about that. But they're focused on today. They're focused on activities to do today. That may be their form of employment, maybe their source of income. And I understand all that. But I think it is important to constantly remind people that we have a responsibility to try to use our land responsibly in a way that preserves the long-term viability of it as a place to live. And I know people, when you get down to the nitty gritty of them, they tend to agree with that. I'm sure there's two or three people in the county that don't care about the land at all, but most people do. So we may argue here over what to do and how to do it, but I think in our hearts, we, we kind of want the same thing. But we approach maybe the, um, you know, the importance of one thing over another a little differently. And so I hope, I hope that everybody involved gets that message, but with, um, goal for the forest practices act is what really rules what goes on. And so to make any fundamental changes of the sort that some of us might like to see would have to be done at the state level and we just have to live with that and, and, um, and, and work through the state if, if there's a, a real desire to make a fundamental change there. So we'll just do the best we can with the tools we have available here in Quetzal. Kind of sorry to go on for so.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferrer. I'll just note, I wanted to, I was just looking through the Oregon shores, um, letter again and just, just noting that, um, you know, 85% of our county is forest land and, um, you know, some of that is owned by the state, but the vast majority of that is owned by companies that live elsewhere, some of them in New York, you know, and, uh, global even. And so they're not as invested in the long term. But one thing those companies might get is that the market is changing and that, um, soon there'll be a large market for carbon sequestration. And so I just note that that's an opportunity for them and then also for us to, um, shift how we're thinking about the value of trees. Um, if we have to put a dollar amount on it, it, it may be that it's more valuable in the ground, um, than out of the ground. Um, so just noting that going forward. Um, okay, well, uh, we have, we have a motion. We have a second. We've discussed. I'd like to go on to a vote unless anyone objects. Commissioner Ferrer, final thoughts? No, okay. Um, all right, so. This is where we're at, right? The, the motion on the table is to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the revisions to go for as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. All right. That is consensus. Thank you, everyone. We made it through that. Um, a lot of people fear, do you want five minutes of break or do you want to power through these last agenda items?
Excuse me, Nadia Gail's computer froze, so she is in the process of rebooting. This might be a good time to take a break.
Great idea. Okay, so five minutes. It's right now, it's about 12:40, so we'll get back together. 46.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner, uh, sorry, Director Henriksen.
No, taking a break. Yeah, we're about two and a half, almost three hours. We're approving the, uh, goals one through four of the, um, comprehensive plan. No, yes, um, they call me com- commissar. I'm a commissar. And they call me a commissioner because I'm a, a planning commissioner. Yeah, they do.
Commissioner Orr, you are on, um, you're, you are unmuted.
Oh, Lord. I'm kidding me. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's get this party started here again. Um, I had failed to wrap up our last agenda item. I have coffee in hand now, so I can finish it out here. Um, so I just wanted to follow up and just say that the recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commission, Commissioners for their approval. Everyone is welcome to go to their regular meeting and, um, give your thoughts at that meeting, um, both verbally and in writing. Um, uh, maybe Director Henriksen, you could just let us know about, um, dates on that. And other next steps.
Yeah, so at this point, until we've gotten through all the rest of the goals, um, we, we won't be bringing the adoption ordinance for the comprehensive plan update to the board until July of 2022. Um, there will be, uh, town halls, which have yet to be scheduled, uh, but those will be occurring between now and July of next year. So.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, all right, well, let's move on to our, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ferrer.
Uh, I was just wondering, how do we, um, well, for lack of better phrase, how do we deal with the, uh, lengthy written input from Oregon shores related to this morning's meeting? Is it just floating out there and we don't respond or, uh, you know, they made a request to hold the record open. I, I don't really see doing that now, but, um, I feel as though uh, as a commissioner, I should go through and, and read everything they have there and think about it certainly because it's public input. So does anybody else have, uh, thoughts on that?
Um, as far as staff, we would request that their, uh, submit will be included as part of the record.
And so does that mean it will be part of the, um, packet that's forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their final approval? And, um, right. And then of course, if anybody in this room is connected with them, you might suggest that they could also provide, uh, fresh comments, um, at that time and also give verbal comments if they're able.
And if anyone in the room is connected, going back to our training today, review your connection to see if you are a potential conflict, an actual conflict, uh, ex parte communication, or if you, that would constitute bias. So.
Around a legislative hearing.
Well, true legislative. So yes, good job. You paid attention to my presentation. Where did I go? Yeah, but there still is the potential for a conflict of interest, so we still need to be mindful of that. So.
Yeah, I know them, but I've never, I, I've never seen any of this before.
Can anybody summarize their, uh, you know, their top five points or the, do they have a, I heard you about a summary letter, but can, can they just, what's their, what is their strongest point, the points?
No, they actually, it's a lot of detail. So what I might suggest is rather, because we're already past this agenda item, I think we should go ahead and, um, and move on. But I But I suggest you take a look at it. And, you know, of course, you know, anybody, a member of the commission or not, can go ahead and follow up in the way that you feel feel fit. But I will say, you know, I did just briefly read it and I tried to, I think some of their comments were addressed by some of the things that we did today. So especially like their first section, a lot of it is about the word citizen. So that was addressed. Other pieces, you know, they were, I think, in some cases, supportive of some of the amendments that were made in the joint session. So but there are some things that were not followed up on in this meeting. So, okay, I think we should move on. And so next on our agenda is work session discussion, which looks a little unfamiliar perhaps. And so I asked Commissioner, I asked Director Hendrickson about this. And this is the equivalent of good of the order. So would any of the commissioners like to make any comments for good of the order, otherwise known as work session discussion? Any other issues that are not in the agenda you just want to touch on? No? Okay, well, I'd just like to thank you all for all the all the work that you put into both the comprehensive plan and the commission. And I particularly want to thank Commissioner Strickland for his many years of hard work on the commission. Okay, let's move on to project status report. Director Hendrickson, will you please give the report?
Yes, the reports included in your agenda package. Many of the projects are either completed at this point or have expired. So there's, we're down to one page of projects. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing none. To get back to my agenda, we can move on to the director's report.
Yeah, so a couple of items. First of all, our next joint meeting with the countywide Citizen Advisory Committee will be October 26 at 9:00 a.m. Our agenda package will be going out next week and we will be discussing goal five. You should also have received or will be receiving an email from Amanda Rabinchuk, who is with the county, and that has the Board's strategic plan survey. And what we are working on is the board adopted their strategic plan in December of last year. Staff has been working with them to implement that plan during this current fiscal year. And so moving forward and planning for next fiscal year, 2223, the board is asking for input from staff and stakeholders in the community about what should be our priorities moving forward in 202223. And so the survey will cover much more than land use. It covers the five topic areas that the boards identified, which include governance, economic development, environmental quality, social services and infrastructure. And so it covers a broad range of items. And if you haven't received that yet, be on the lookout for it. It's also going out to all of our Citizen Advisory Committee members as well. So you may see two emails perhaps. Upcoming board dates and meetings. We've got tomorrow evening at 5:00, actually at 4:00 p.m. we'll be starting. We're going to be doing some training with the board to walk them through each of the 18 goals like we did with you at your last meeting and break down for them what each goal covers, what it doesn't cover, and what they should be focusing on as they look at the upcoming reviews of each goal. So we have that coming up, October 20, which is a daytime work session at 10 o'clock. We will be looking at goals six, eight, and 13 with the board. And also on October 13, we will be bringing to the board at their work session the applicants who have applied for Myrna Patrick's replacement. We originally had five applicants. At this point, two have withdrawn their applications, so we're down to three. And so we're just presenting those to the board for informational purposes only. And let's see, October 27 at 4:00 p.m., work session. We'll be finishing up our training with the board on the statewide planning goals. And then on November 3, we will be having a work session to discuss the proposed changes to the subdivision and partition regs and road standards that we talked about a few months ago at our planning commission meeting. We'll also be looking at goals seven and nine of the comprehensive plan. And then next month, at your regular meeting, which will be November 9, we'll be doing the reading and recommendation and review of those final changes to our subdivision regulations. So I just want to give you a heads up that that one's coming along. And then we'll also be in November looking at the final draft of goal five as well, following your meeting with the countywide Citizen Advisory Committee at the end of this month. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have a 1:00 meeting that I have to be at, so I'm going to be leaving in just a few minutes. So thank you, everyone. I think y'all did a very good job today and especially Chair Gardner, you ran a very good meeting. So thank you.
I only do my best with your support. Thank you so much. Quick question, do you think we're going to have another mega joint meeting? Is it going to be another 93?
Yeah, I think goal five is going to be a long and lengthy one. There's just so much to cover. So I'm going to try and we'll break it down by each of the inventories so that we just have a little chunk to deal with at each time as we work through goal five on the 26. But it will be a long meeting.
Thank you. Any quick questions for Director Henderson before she switches meetings from Zoom to Zoom? Or non-Zoom, is it non-Zoom? All right. Thanks, everybody. I think we can go ahead and close out the meeting then.
Wait a minute. So the October 26 meeting, we will get an email with a Zoom connection information and attachments or not?
Is that the joint CAC PC meeting you're talking about?
I believe that, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so we should, yeah. And Director Hendrickson's been really great about getting us notices for our own meetings a week in advance, both the joint and the planning commission, but also the relevant Board of Commissioner regular and work sessions as well. So I'm thankful for that. I feel like it's really been helpful because there's a lot of meetings. Any other questions or comments, knowing that Director Henderson is now gone? We have other staff people in the room, though. All right, hearing none. If I had a gavel, I'd say this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you.